All right, good evening. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Welcome to those with us tonight and welcome to those at home watching. Tonight is Thursday, September ninth, two thousand and, or 2021. The time is six thirty PM, and this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Independent School District 191. Dr. Werth, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. We'll begin with approving tonight's agenda. If I could have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second?
Second.
Second, and by Director Werth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining or not in favor, I should say? No. Hearing none, the motion is approved unanimously. We will now move to the information section of our meeting tonight, beginning with a report about summer projects from Dave Lake, Director of Operations and Transportation. Welcome, Dave.
Evening, Board Chair Miller, Board members, and Dr. Battle. So tonight I'll be presenting on the summer projects for FY21. First, we'll begin with Eagle Ridge Middle School. So we did a bituminous reconstruction at the main entry lot in Eagle Ridge. Originally, we were intending on doing the entire property. However, with the amount of construction and summer school, we chose to just do the upper lot, and then next summer, we'll go ahead and do the lower lot as well as Hidden Next, we did, we opened up for a bid, and we had AVM Construction was awarded that project. We did a locker room remodel with new flooring, LED lighting, showers, locker rooms, and you'll see in the next slides, a couple of other items. If you'll note, in the left-hand picture, you won't see any lockers there. ISD 191, we weren't immune to labor shortages as well as supply shortages, and in particular, for us, it was steel shortages. So we had lockers at a couple of projects that were on hold. On the right side, you'll see our new bathrooms. We've got new fixtures, urinals, toilets, new tile on the walls, new partitions, et cetera. In the main gym, we went ahead and resurfaced, re-sanded, and re-lined the flooring. Turned out great. We replaced all of the interior doors with hollow metal. They previously were wooden doors. And then we did a resealing and recaulking of the entire exterior of the property. At Nicollet Middle School, I think it was November twentieth board meeting of last year, we identified some areas to use some of the Vision 191 funds. So we went ahead and did a reconstruction of a couple of areas. Room 117, and then on the third floor, if my memory serves correct, I think it was room 328. So we re-carpeted, added LED lighting, redid the painting, the casework, and freshened up those rooms so that they could be used for collaborative learning spaces. Along with that, we, the round building, resealed and recaulted all of the windows. We added two hydration stations, and then the updated restrooms were in that room 117 that was on the previous slide. Moving on to Diamond Head Education Center, as you're all well aware, we sold River Ridge over the summer, and so the BEST program moved over to Diamond Head, with door two becoming the main entry point. You don't see it in the picture, but we have a bus loop there now for the BEST transition We updated many areas throughout the Diamond Head building. We dedicated programming areas, added new entry, card entry doors, repainted, redid the restrooms, the casework, the flooring, hallways, lockers, and then we even freshened up the paint in the hallways so that it would be age-appropriate and different from the ECSE side of the building. Along with that, we had, we've had a lot of storage issues over the years here in this building, and so we identified some spaces to bolster our storage. So we were serving multiple departments, special education, operate, or physical therapy and occupational therapy, as well as instructional, also custodial, and then the BEST program. Moving on to Edward Neal, we repainted the exterior of the building, freshened up the railings, the dock areas. Along with that, when we did our 2015-16 Vision 191 program, or funding projects around the elementary schools to bolster our security and our entry areas, we didn't do anything with the flooring at that time. So the entry flooring, the tile work was starting to crack, and so we had somebody come in and do a re-patch everything, and then we laid our carpet tile throughout that area. Along with that, we did door security updates. So as you all know, Edward Neal, it's a round building. There were 12 doors that we identified in all the common areas. We wrapped around, and we redid all of the, all of the lock, security, and lock sets in those areas. Moving on to Harriet Bishop, we, this was also in that November twentieth board update. We used funding from Vision 191 to add two restrooms to meet the needs of the voluntary pre-K and special education students. I tried to get some good pictures of the bathrooms, but they're for little kids. It was, it was really hard to get back and try to get a picture. So the best I could do was a little bit of tile and a toilet, so casework looked great, the bathrooms looked great, and the staff is happy with those. Along with that, we, I met with one of the special education supervisors, as well as principal SA, and there was a need to add an ADA, or a door opener. We have one at the front entry, but we never put one in around back where the kids come in off the bus, and so it just made sense to add that there for those students. As a part of the project, we had a drinking fountain in that area, but then we just updated it and added a bottle fill near that one classroom. Moving on to Gideon Pond, same as Eagle Ridge, we replaced all the interior doors with hollow metal doors. We had a couple of areas down in the basement where the insulation and the piping had some minor leaks, so we freshened that up and replaced it with new. Later on in the fall, Director Cronibetter, she's going to have a dishwasher replaced at Gideon Pond. We also did a walk-in freezer, reflooring. And then the picture on the right is, that's the art room. So the casework was starting to deteriorate, and we went ahead and replaced that and added new fixtures. Gideon Pond and Vista View, we had it identified to do Gideon Pond with new skylights. We had some money in our LTFM project, so I decided to go ahead and do Vista View, same age, or roughly the same age buildings, same layout. So we went ahead and added new rooftop skylights at both properties. And then finally, Ron Elementary, we did some sidewalk and curb repairs and restriped that area. And that is it. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Director Lake. I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
It looks very nice. All of it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Any others? Yes? Ms. Rowland.
First, Dave, thank you very much. I know that, you know, every year, this is always a great report because it really highlights all the work that you and your team do to really keep our buildings looking as great as they do, and so that we can all take the pride that we do in our buildings. So thank you very much. Just a couple of questions. The hydration stations, do you, and if you don't have the answer right now, you can let me know later, but just curious where we are. It seems like we're systematically adding hydration stations in the bottle fill areas in the schools.
Right.
Are we at a point where we have most, those in most of our schools, or?
Yeah, so last year, what we did, both Lisa Ryder and I, we connected, and we decided that we had a handful of buildings that had them, and so what we wanted to do was make sure that every building had at least one. And so last year, we did one at Nicollet, and then we added the first and the third floor to go along with it. But it was really important, it's important every year, but it's certainly so with the pandemic. We wanted to make sure we had a bottle fill at every site. So we do, we do have that.
And it's just, and it's something that you're kind of progressively working toward.
Yep, yep. And then honestly, my intent now is to, I had one principal reach out, and they wanted a second one, and I said, okay, we'll move towards that, but then with the idea that everyone will get a second one so that it's equitable for all sites.
That's great. Yeah, I completely agree with the, you know, the comments about pandemic and kids needing to be able to fill their water bottles and carry them with them. So that's, that's great. The last question is about just not having been able to walk the new BEST space. How, how are we comparing what they had at River Ridge versus, you know, the space that they, that the students and the program has now?
Sure. So we did, we had several meetings in May, and then Stephanie White and Jennifer Mittendorf, the director and supervisor, have been integral with that. We've been meeting all along, trying to, because they, they know the needs of their students better than I would, and so I really relied on both of them, and they've been a great help and a great asset to, to help serve the needs of those students. And yeah, from all the feedback I've had from staff being back the last, you know, week now, they're really happy with the space, and yeah, so I think, I think we're on the right page.
Awesome. And it's fulfilling the, fulfilling the needs in a similar way that the previous space did.
Right, right.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a.
Go ahead.
Early in the presentation, you mentioned, I think it was Eagle Ridge?
Yeah.
That doesn't have the lockers in the locker room yet?
Correct.
Because of the steel shortage, which is understandable, but do we have an ETA on when that might, and what are we doing in the meantime, I guess? Because the picture, there were no lockers at all, so that...
Right, correct.
The old ones had already been removed, it looked like.
Right, right. So they're supposed to be in October tenth. I met with Mr. Saleem, the principal there, and then the assistant principal, Mr. Heim, and we were ready to have our contractor bring in temporary lockers, but Mr. Saleem graciously said that, you know, we don't use those in September, we don't start using them until October, November. So they were okay with it, and, you know, knock on will be lucked out on that one, because that's not always the case.
Right. That's what I was wondering, is that they get used between now and when we expect them to come in? So that's good to hear.
So we were fortunate that the timing worked out in our favor, so it buys us a little more time.
Great. Thank you. And I agree with others, it looks, it all looks really good.
Oh, thank you.
Nice job.
Director Seed.
So thank you a lot. This was really nicely done and loving the pictures. Quick question, going back to the hydration stations. Yay, we do definitely need them because water bottles are not good. But question is, how is this adding on maintenance, and how often does it need to be looked at as far as filtration and things like that, now that you are planning to add more stations?
Yeah, the maintenance is pretty straightforward. So all of our bottle fill stations, it's the same out here at Diamond Head, too. They'll have a count, and then it has, literally just has a red light and a green light, and it's green. And then when it needs to be changed, it's a red light. We over, we have a supply of those filters. We get them from our supplier. So we've got them on hand at the buildings, and it's a 10-minute change out to, to put one filter, or put a new filter in. So the maintenance is pretty, pretty straightforward and pretty simple.
All right. That's great to know. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments, or? Again, thank you, Director Lake. I do have a quick question about the metal doors. I'm just curious about that, in place of the wood ones. What's the, I'm just simply curious.
The intent there is for fire protection, so, you know, it's the newest building code or standard, so anytime we change out, you know, whether it's lighting or any, any other item, you know, we go to the most current code or standard.
Good. So we're raising the safety of the buildings.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. The next portion of our information part tonight will be a report on the first day of school by Dr. Battle, our superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller, and Directors of the Board, and our student representative. Last year at this time, I was reporting on a first day that was unlike any in my history as an educator. Today, I'm happy to share something at least a little bit typical. On Wednesday, thousands of our students made their way to school in person, whether on buses, with their parents, riding their bikes, or walking. It was so wonderful to see them arrive at our schools, greeting their friends, their teachers, and getting started with the new school year. We're going to show some photos on the screen while I give this report. Oh, there's the link crew. I appreciate it seeing our students and staff wearing masks, which is an important part of our health and safety protocols, and our goal of continuing with in-person learning. Some students did not come to school in person on Wednesday. Our students in kindergarten and first grade will have their first full day on Friday, September tenth, after two days for conferences and assessments with their teachers. Grades seven and eight, as well as grades 10, 12, learn from home on Wednesday so that sixth graders and ninth graders could participate in welcoming activities and get to know their schools with a little extra space that first day. Most of our preschool programs start next week on September fourteenth, and of course, some students are not planning on learning in person this year. I'm happy to report that as of this morning, enrollment in our 191 Virtual Academy has grown to 484 students in grades K-12. This launch of Virtual Academy this year has been a massive undertaking and a wonderful collaboration between our teachers, CISA, technology staff, and more. I am so proud that we're able to offer a permanent, high-quality, online learning experience for our students. I know that members of the Board and members of our community have probably heard about some school districts struggling to provide some services as the school year starts. So I want to share some information about how we are prepared to provide those services. First, when it comes to transportation, our partners at Smitty &amp; Sons have been able to provide drivers to cover every route, which is so important for our families. As of right now, they are running 88 routes and expect to be transporting 5,739 students to and from school each day. Our wonderful food and nutrition services team is once again providing free breakfast and free lunch to each student each day, thanks to federal funding. I'm so thankful for the work of Director Julie Cronibetter and her entire team. I know they have been working tirelessly since the pandemic began more than 18 months ago. I also want to take this time to encourage families to complete an application for educational benefits. Meals may be free already, but families that qualify can receive discounts on school activities and other services, and it helps ensure our schools receive the funding they need for instructional services. Lastly, a short update on our staffing. We have welcomed 166 new staff members since the end of last school year, including 61 new teachers. Of those teachers, 17 need, 17 either are out of field permissions or Tier One or Two exemptions. We still do have several openings remaining as the school year starts with the greatest needs in educational assistant positions. Special education has been impacted especially hard this year in terms of staffing. Our goal is to be fully staffed, but we, I want you to know, this is part of a national trend, and we actually find ourselves in a better position than many of our neighbors. So lastly, I want to express my deep gratitude to staff members who have worked so hard to prepare us for this week. Their dedication, professionalism, and caring are joy to see in action and a gift to our entire community. Thank you to all of them, and thank you to all of our families for entrusting your students to us for what I believe will be a wonderful year in 191. And that concludes my report on the first day of school.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Any questions or comments from Board members?
I'm curious, and you may not know this yet, but it came out the last time we got that number. So for the Virtual Academy enrollment, do we have an updated number of how many of those are open enrolled from outside 191?
Yesterday, it was 30. Do we have an updated number? Stacy Sovan?
I didn't check that number.
I think that's pretty close to what it was before, so most of the people who have transferred over to Virtual Academy are already within 191.
Yes.
Thanks. That's what I was curious about.
Any other questions, comments?
I just have a comment. I think it's so wonderful. I was just surprised to hear that they're getting free breakfast and lunch. I was, that's just fantastic. And is, are we the only district, we're not the only district doing it?
No, it came out, oh, maybe three or four weeks ago from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the U.S. Department of Education.
Awesome.
Can you let some families know how they can fill out those applications for the food and where they can find it?
I'll ask Executive Director for Business Services Lisa Ryder to provide that information so they get the correct, exact information.
Good evening. The application for educational benefits can be applied for online, or there are paper copies that can also be received at the school offices or at our food and nutrition office here at Diamond Head.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd just like to comment that, and repeat, I guess, a little bit of that, that, you know, that we have some, a lot of things we do on this board, and, but this, one of the great parts of this journey is the opening day, and then, of course, graduation at the other end of the, of the year. But this slideshow was really neat to see the, it really connected us to what you were talking about. I appreciate that. It's fantastic that we're able to get the kids back in the classroom and, and learning in a, in a proper environment for that. And actually, Director Hume, the, I think it is still around 30, whatever, the interesting thing is, we are unique in that most districts that have an online academy, most of their students are coming from within their district, so even having the amount that we have is pretty high. So in fact, I spoke to Christine with the Pacer because they're generating a fair amount of interest, so it's a great thing that it's growing like that, so. Well, excellent. We'll move on. Dr. Battle will begin, again, with giving us an update about District 191's effort to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH, respectively.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, and our student representative. I'll begin my report first to share that we are committed to providing in-person instruction for all students while continuing to address the ongoing effects of COVID-19. Two topics I want to share information about this morning first involves visitors. So allowing visitors and volunteers in our school strengthens our partnerships and supports the learning environment for all students. During these times, unprecedented times of COVID-19 transmission risk, restrictions may be necessary to prevent the spread of infection and promote a healthy and safe learning environment for our students. And so access by visitors to District 190 schools will be adjusted based on the level of community transmission in our two counties, Dakota and Scott, and cases within a building along with recommendations from local public health and Minnesota Department of Health. Unfortunately, both Dakota and Scott counties are in the high transmission range, so visitors are welcome outside of the instructional day. District employees are not considered visitors when they have work-related reasons to be at sites other than their primary work location. Families with school-related business to attend to, such as enrollment, are also considered visitors, and those are allowed. Visitors are expected to follow our masking and other health protocols in place at the time of their visit. The second topic I'd like to share some information about is face coverings. As you know, face coverings are required in all District 191 schools and buildings for visitors, staff, and students three years of age and older, regardless of their vaccination status. Face covering requirements and recommendations do not apply to those who are unable to tolerate wearing a face covering because of a medical condition, mental health condition, or disability. And children under age two years are not required to wear face coverings. I will continue to monitor health updates from Minnesota Department of Health and Dakota and Scott Counties to determine if and when I will adjust any masking requirements. I am considering looking at least a two-week trend in the counties we serve, and other factors will be considered. Oh, and I do have one other comment, a topic to share. Facility use. Please know, district facilities are still available for use according to guidelines set forth by Minnesota Department of Health. So please contact if you have facility needs outside the instructional day or on weekends. Now for the remainder of the report, I'll turn it over to Bernadette Bean, our Lead Licensed School Nurse, and Stephanie White, Director of Student Support Services, and our District COVID-19 Coordinator.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share with you some of the amazing health and safety mitigation procedures that we have in our district at this time, and to utilize in supporting the goal that we have in-person learning in the safest way. The data that I typically would share with you at the beginning of this presentation, I will intermittently share that through the slides.
This is the framework that we use with our staff to provide guidance, to leadership, and to help them get ready for the year to come. Thanks to Principal Chris Belmont, we have highlighted the word "trust" in order to help people remember these, this framework. We don't have mandates that come from the state anymore, and so it really becomes local control all the way down to the individual student leader. And so we want them to take responsibility, rely on each other, utilize their knowledge. Bernie calls it COVID critical thinkers. We all have good experience, and we know how to think this through. We're going to provide supportive leadership and really help to think it through in all of our settings, individual, small group, and classroom.
So as we know, the metrics for determining the level of community transmission has changed from the 14-day rate for 10,000 individuals of positive cases to the CDC recommended metrics of the past seven days, positive cases per 100,000. So for, and the other metric is a positive...
So for and the other metric is the positivity rate. The seven-day case rate for Dakota County is at one eighty-nine point five, which is up from one thirty-two point sixteen two weeks ago. For Scott County, it is at two oh eight point seven one, which also is up from one thirty two weeks ago. Among the positive cases in Scott County, twenty-seven percent of those were among school-aged children. Comparison data from Dakota County was not available. The positivity rate for Minnesota for the week of August twenty-second to August twenty-eighth was six percent, which was an increase from five point three the week prior. As of September second, Dakota County's positivity rate is six point three seven and Scott County is at seven point five percent. So you will notice that for the case rate, we are in the high level of transmission and for the positivity rate, we are in the moderate, but we are slowly creeping up to that substantial category. The guidance would call us to work in the level of transmission that is the highest of those two indicators. And as we have said, there's only two requirements at this time, which are given to us by CDC in comparison to last year when MDH provided us with requirements. And that would be that face coverings are worn on a bus, a public transportation, and that we report all positive cases. And Dr. Battle did talk a little bit about our mask requirement here in our district. We COVID plans, that term, we're phasing that out a little bit here and because I like to talk more about a comprehensive comprehensive prevention plan. What we learned last year is the mitigation strategies that we put in place for COVID worked really well for other communicable diseases such as influenza, norovirus. And so we want to be more comprehensive and talk about prevention for many things and not so specific to COVID. They work hand in hand. And of course, vaccinations continue to be one of the a big mitigation strategy. Those numbers are slowly creeping up. In Minnesota, the vaccination rate for twelve and older with at least one dose of vaccine is seventy-one point one percent. And for Scott County, it's seventy-five point one percent. In Dakota County, seventy-three point nine percent. MDH, CDC, they talk about layering mitigation strategies, layering those prevention measures, and the top two being the masking and the physical distancing. Stephanie's going to talk a little bit about the other layers of mitigation that we're doing specifically in our district.
The key point to physical distancing this year is just maximizing your space. More of our students are coming in person and we're so happy about that, but really helping teachers to think through what that means for their particular space and spreading kiddos out as much as possible. There's a new exception to close contacts for students. If you are more than three feet and you're wearing a mask, you don't have to quarantine. And so we're trying to utilize that whenever we can. For cohorting or grouping, that's just the concept of making sure that we're thinking through how many other people kiddos are exposed to. So thinking through cohorting small groups, thinking through cohorting grade levels, lab partners, all of those things. We really want to continue our routines for disinfection because that was a huge benefit last year. Continuing the hand hygiene and soap and water are our go-to for cleaning classrooms. Operations through Dave Lake, we really are maximizing our ventilation systems and we're meeting all the codes there. And then we talked a little bit about water fountains tonight already, and we also are promoting that water bottle usage as it seems safer.
So during the past two weeks for case investigations in the district that the health service team has completed, we have completed four case investigations, meaning individuals that were positive during their infectious period in the building. Two weeks prior, we had completed nine case investigations. However, we even though our number's lower, we have been informed of other positive cases of individuals that were not in our building. And this is where I have to give a shout out to the community, to the staff, to the parents, working with us to create a symptom-free zone. When they're not feeling well, they're staying home. And so we're keeping that transmission at bay in our buildings. That's the foundation of all the mitigation strategies, making sure that people stay home when they're sick. We will continue to use the decision tree to guide and support families with those decisions when their child is feeling sick. According per the decision tree, we will continue to support a fourteen-day quarantine if there is a positive case in the household and that student or adult is not vaccinated or have not had a positive disease in the last nineteen days. And of course, always promoting that they talk with their doctor. Our process for case investigations has not changed, but just became more has tuned up even more with our experience. So positive cases are reported to the school nurse. The school nurse starts the investigation process using different tools that we've created to ask open-ended questions, to gather the information to determine who may be a close contact. We reach out to those close contacts that were identified and we talk to them about different quarantining options that may be best for their family. And then we do send them a notification letter, which is a template from MDH about being a close contact. And then we also send a letter to the school community at large so that they're aware of a positive case, but also it serves as a reminder to be mindful of symptoms, stay home when you're sick, seek testing if that's what is needed. So screening for staff, last year, we did an optional saliva screening every two weeks. And this year, as soon as we secure all the supplies, we will continue to offer that screening to our staff, but only on a weekly basis versus every other week. Last time we met, we talked a little bit about securing a community partner to look at testing for our students. And testing is when when symptoms are present. I am excited and thrilled that the partner that is going to work with us on this program is the Dakota Child and Family Clinic in Burnsville. What that will look like is when a child becomes ill during the school day, the nurse will reach out to the family and then through a survey, we will be able to schedule an appointment for the family to go right to their drive-through swab site and be tested before they even go home. That the results will be confidential, they will be turned over to the family, not to the school. As we work that system through and make sure that it's fluid, we will roll that out to students that might be sick at home and not able to come into school yet or our staff members.
For future decisions and guidance, we'll continue to watch those data points of community transmission and case investigations. And then, of course, our partners with Scott and Dakota County, which we meet with on a weekly basis, the state and federal health officials, which we are on a Minnesota Department of Health call every Wednesday. Dr. Battle leads our COVID advisory team, so we get great guidance from that as well as all of you. And that concludes our report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up for questions, comments. Yes, Director Alt.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So understanding that at elementary, we've added additional staff to help with learning, but obviously that's going to help with class sizes. I'm wondering how, you know, thinking at the high school, we have some pretty large classes there typically in a typical year. How did scheduling class size and the pandemic factor into deciding student schedules this year and making sure that the social distancing that we're encouraging, right? We want students to be socially distanced in their classrooms, is actually something that can happen in the classrooms?
It's a good question. I think that the leaders and the people who are in charge of those schedules are using that filter all the time and doing the best they can with the with the students and the academic needs that they have or the classes they want. They're thinking through where classes are located and then talking about how do we get extra pieces of furniture out of the classroom? How do we structure that classroom so the right desks or tables are available for those students so that we give them access in the safest way possible?
So then either the classes are smaller at secondary or we've been able to allow the students to socially distance by giving them, right? That's what I'm hearing.
Well, it is maximizing your space. So at times, the class is small enough where we can do six feet. At times, the class goes down to three feet and then the continuum from there. There are classes all over the district that are not that full or that are too full to even meet three feet. But then we're talking about the other mitigation strategies and how we can layer those in to make sure kids stay healthy and staff stay healthy.
So if we have a class that's like forty or more kids, obviously, they're crammed into the classroom, wearing masks, and we have these other mitigation strategies that will keep them safe?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So the last question. And this might be a conversation for another board meeting, but of course, President Biden came out with his mandate just this afternoon, mandating that employers a hundred that employers who have over a hundred employees must mandate vaccines for their employees and for those who cannot or choose not to, they opt for testing. I'm guessing that will be coming to us next time.
Thank you for that question, Director Alt, members of the board. So actually, Stacy Solvane and I, our Executive Director of HR, have had more than a few conversations the last two weeks. And I've also had a conversation with Bernie Bean also. And so what we're going to do, we're going to look at that order. We will consult with our General Counsel and then I'll be giving information to the board.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes.
Question. I didn't hear a clear protocol of students that have either a family member that is ill with COVID or a sibling in another school. What is that protocol for that for the student that is still attending school? Do they need to stay home and quarantine? I've been asked that question and I said, that's a good question. I'd like to.
Yep, thank you for that question. So looking at our data from last year, talking with Dakota County, MDH, and getting their advice, what we have, we decided we are going to pilot. And as with COVID, everything can change. But what we would like to start with is when a child is sick at one school, the household, the other siblings in another school can stay put. We are going to promote that drive-through testing so we can quickly learn whether that child is positive or negative. And so there's not lost time for that child either. So the children, the siblings will be able to stay in school. However, we are going to really focus on symptom-free, meaning even one little symptom, we would want that sibling to stay home.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yep.
Director Werbe?
So I've been hearing talk that there's possibility of the vaccine for like five to twelve being approved later this fall. Has there been any discussion on how the district can help with getting, you know, clinics set up? Will we still have use of Metcalf and other locations that the district can assist with getting that rolled out when it does happen?
I can comment on how what we've done this last year. As we have opportunities, we roll it out to families, to staff. We've partnered with Dakota County at clinics at Metcalf. We've also, the MDH helped us with the clinic at the high school last year. So we we utilize any opportunity we have to bring that service, that opportunity to our family and to our community.
The high school is working to schedule a vaccine clinic coming up in a couple of weeks. Some more information will be coming out. And I think Dakota County and Scott County are good partners for us there, giving us opportunity and we take advantage of that anytime.
Yeah, thank you.
So Stephanie, I'm guessing going back to the question Abigail asked earlier about classroom size in the high school, I would think that there's cleaning that's happening between periods in those classes that are kind of having the more than forty students in there.
Yes, and and we're encouraging those mitigation strategies throughout the building and really asking all staff to think that through high surface areas, hygiene, good hand hygiene, good routines to be put in place. So it's kind of all hands on deck.
And Bernadette, I know last time you mentioned that, you know, viruses tend to have their highs and lows. Where do you think we're we are right now with the Delta variant? You might not know, but I'm just curious, you know, just to give us an idea of are we expecting numbers to go up and where we're at with all that?
I think the big unknown right now is the effects of big gatherings that have happened before school started and and just coming back to school where districts that maybe don't have universal masking. So there's a lot of unknowns yet that factor in it. What we can see, though, is the rates are going up each week yet, and so we are not at a plateau by far yet.
And you mentioned, I'm really glad to hear that Dakota family is doing this part with us. But you mentioned parents are not required to share the the test results. They already doesn't come back to the district. But how does that help with, you know, understanding what what occurred in in the litigation piece?
I guess what I meant by that is the that's a great question for clarifying is that it is Dakota family will not share directly with us the information on that test result.
Sure.
But our our community has been great partners. We have not had that concern. And I really think our our case rates being lower this week and knowing that individuals were sick and they stayed home and they told us that really speaks highly to the partnership and the commitment this community has for the health and safety of everybody.
That's great to hear once again, and I really do echo that with you, too. Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
This is kind of coinciding, though. But then the clinic itself would have to report any positive cases then to MDH.
Correct. They would have to report it to MDH.
So it's not necessarily you as part of the school district, because you wouldn't be getting that information, but they as the clinic would be doing the positive positivity rate tracking. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I had a couple here. So the the metric we're looking at changed to ten thousand or a hundred thousand over seven days, right?
Correct.
And it was ten thousand over fourteen?
Correct.
I'm just curious because I thought I read something in a paper about another district that was making some decisions and they met mentioned the ten thousand over fourteen. So are the counties still providing that data point?
What I yes, some some counties are giving that metric, but CDC and MDH really wants us to be supporting the seven-day metric. It's more universal. It's a better representation because it's a hundred thousand, so it's more statistically better. But some districts are reporting a fourteen-day number. And so if in comparison, so Scott County's seven-day at two hundred and eight, even though it's a different metric, it would be similar to like a forty-one fourteen day.
Okay.
Bernie is a great mathematician.
Yeah.
She's been converting.
Oh, not really.
I answered that question, too.
No, I just remember we talked about this. No, I just, I remember we talked about this, and then I saw it in the paper, and I thought, I thought we changed. But okay. And then I just want, I think we needed some clarification, because Dr. Battle, in your report, you mentioned age, the masking, this is about the masking requirement. You mentioned age three. Then I think you had age two somewhere in your statement. And your, your presentation said, I don't remember.
Three, three and up.
Three, I don't think it said three and up. I think it said, so let's just be very clear. If I have a three-year-old, they need to have a mask on. If a three-and-a-half-year-old, they need to have a mask on, right?
Yes.
But if they're two and a half, they do not need to have a mask on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right. I think that's all, then. Thank you very much for the presentation this evening, and all the information and work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next part of our information meeting, component of our meeting tonight will be our student representative report. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Zoe Olson, our new student representative. Zoe is a senior, right, at Burnsville High School, and was chose by her class to represent student voice in our district, and we appreciate you doing this. So don't forget to turn your mic on and speak into it and go right ahead.
Thank you. Today was the first day of in-person school for most students at Burnsville High School and the IST-191 middle schools, with the exception of sixth and ninth graders who began yesterday. Yesterday, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders met with their advisory classes and advisors, and also had class meetings, while the ninth graders had the high school to themselves, in a successful and fun day of freshman orientation led by the Burnsville High School Link Crew. After being welcomed to Burnsville High School by all of the staff members, the ninth graders had an assembly to get them excited and comfortable as the school year began. They then participated in fun activities in a small group setting led by their junior and senior Link Crew leaders. That enabled them to become comfortable at BHS while getting to know some of their peers. The ninth graders also got a tour of the school and ran a shortened version of their class schedule. And the sixth graders at the middle school had a similar experience yesterday, participating in an orientation day. Both yesterday and today, there was a great deal of excitement as students, teachers, and administrators returned in person, many for the first time since March of 2020. Students were able to connect with teachers and peers that many of them hadn't seen in approximately a year and a half. And throughout the day today, students at Burnsville High School primarily participated in get-to-know-you activities, went over housekeeping matters so as they got used to the routine of school again, not doing a ton of work, just getting back into the swing of things. And after all the challenges we've had over the past year and a half or so, it was very refreshing for everyone to be back at school. And this definitely shown, shown through with everyone. But there were also some challenges in returning to school again. Many students had errors in their schedules that needed to be fixed before getting back to school. And this did cause some stress for some students and families, but our counselors worked hard to fix the schedules as efficiently as possible. The start of the school year also has brought the start of many extracurricular activities and athletics. Last week, at the Burnsville High School Open House, there was an athletics and activities fair showcasing all of the activities at Burnsville High School, as well as the passion our students have for those activities. Fall sports officially started on August 16th, and since then, our student athletes have been practicing and competing. In the coming weeks, even more extracurricular activities are set to start up again. And homecoming week is coming up shortly, happening the week of September 20th. All of these activities will provide students with even more opportunities to learn, make connections, and have fun outside of the classroom. All in all, most students were very, and staff were very excited to be able to return in a more regular or normal school setting in person, and as well as the other activities that they are a part of. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Olson. Any comments or questions for student representative?
Thank you.
Thanks again, Zoe, for being here. I was just wondering, do you have the mentor program going on this year, where it's more one-on-one with the ninth graders and the sixth graders, or that you know of?
Yeah, so, in, with Link Crew, it's, so Link Crew led the freshmen yesterday, and they are going to continue to meet with their small groups of freshmen throughout the year. So they are sort of mentors for the ninth graders.
Okay. So it's more, is it more one-on-one, or just groups?
Um.
Groups?
It's, yeah, all, there are juniors and seniors that have groups of students that they work with and can also make more personal connections with. But yeah, they have a group.
Okay.
Do you have about maybe ten to twelve students in each group?
Yep. So if, there are some juniors and senior Link leaders that are in a group by themselves, and they have about ten students in their group. And then there are some that are partners, and they have about fifteen students in their group.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to take the time to thank you to the Link Crew and web. I've been hearing great feedback and tremendous assistance being given to our newcomers for ninth grade and sixth graders. And I just wanted to echo, and I, and I think my fellow board members would also, you know, would also say the same, that it's just so helpful, and we really do appreciate everyone that's in those two programs.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Thank you. That's fantastic. All right. The next part of our information component of our meeting tonight will be superintendent report. Dr. Battle?
Thank you, Chair Miller. Directors of the board, I have one announcement tonight. Tomorrow is the Burnsville Fire Mustard Parade, and they are celebrating their forty-fifth anniversary. Their mission is to bring the community of Burnsville together to celebrate this great community where residents live, work, and play. 191 will participate in the parade. The parade begins at 11:00 a.m. So I will be in the parade with some also board members and some high school groups, Burnsville High School groups. So I encourage everyone, if you do attend, please be safe and be mindful of safety protocols. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Battle.
You said tomorrow.
Saturday?
Uh-oh.
You meant Saturday?
Yes, thank you.
Well, those technically start tomorrow.
These four-day weeks, I think it is Friday tomorrow, so it's Saturday, 11:00 a.m. the parade starts. Thank you.
Oh, my God. I just thought I had to answer off work, so I was just wondering.
Yes, we, you all have school tomorrow, students and staff. You are working. No parade tomorrow, Saturday.
Excellent. Now, we will go to, move to the board member reports part of our information component of the meeting tonight. This, again, is the, the rotation where we're not speaking about assignments or committee reports, but just general board member, any other activities. Anybody have anything they want to bring to the forward? Yes, Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Miller. So I'm going to report on three different things tonight. It was a truly joyous evening last Wednesday night at Gideon Pond's Open House. Families and students were visibly excited to be returning to school in person, meeting new teachers, and visiting ones from years past. It was a real treat to visit with Principal Buchanan, as well as members of her staff who shared similar sentiments. While everyone I spoke with admitted that we did the best we could last year, each of them also shared what a joy it was to be back in person with their students, and appreciating the requirement for masks, as well as looking forward to teaching and learning together in person. I also had the pleasure of attending the Burnsville High School Marching Band's Family and Community Preview of their fall performance. This group has continued to rehearse throughout the summer, leading up to the fall season. Based on last week's preview performance, they are synchronized and ready to go with upcoming football games and parades this month, starting this Saturday, as Dr. Battle mentioned, with the Fire Mustards 40th Anniversary Parade. Finally, last Thursday night, I attended the Minnesota School Board Association's Virtual Academy, Virtual Advocacy Tour, in which there was a review of this past session, as well as predictions for the coming one. Given that this is a bonding year, it is expected that infrastructure will be an area of focus. But with federal American Rescue Planning Funds due to COVID still in the mix, there are questions as to whether there might be some additional education funding. MSBA emphasized that as board members, we need to reflect on policy changes that we would like to advocate for and support this coming session. MSBA will continue to provide guidance on potential areas for advocacy in the coming months. This ends my report.
Thank you. Any other more reports? Nope. Okay. Seeing none. That'll end the information component of our meeting tonight. We'll move now to the business meeting, beginning with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. I'll now ask if there's anybody who wants to move one of our consent agenda items to, for separate considerations. All right. Seeing none, I will take a motion on tonight's consent agenda.
Still moved.
Moved by Director Hume. A second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor of the motion in front of us?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody voting no? Seeing none. The, the motion to pass the consent agenda passes unanimously. Now, we will move to the new business part of our meeting tonight, and that begins with a, a motion in front of us to adopt an authorizing resolution to sell refunding bonds. Speaking on this topic will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
Good evening. And it looks like you have a guest.
Yes, I do. I'm sorry that it's not in the agenda, but Jeff Seeley is our, our Senior Municipal Advisor at Ellers. And as, tonight, we want to talk to you about our pre-sale report related to bonds that would be refunded. I, I felt it was a good idea for him to provide that information and answer any of your questions that you may have. So I'm going to turn this over to Jeff to talk to us about this pre-sale report that is included in your board packet, as well as the other information. But that will be the focus of his conversation.
Thank you, Lisa. It is a pleasure to be in front of you tonight, and we're going to talk a little bit about refinancing, or refunding, as it's called, with municipal bonds. An opportunity to save the district some money and your taxpayers. So tonight, you have a resolution, which we call the authorizing resolution, which would set in motion the process of selling bonds to refund an existing bond issue. We have a pre-sale report that you have, and I'm going to hit some of the highlights of it. So the proposed issue, we're estimating that the par amount, and it's going to fluctuate a little bit depending on premium and market conditions, but about ten, 10.7 million. And they're going to be general obligation, which means your full taxing authority will back these bonds. Alternative facility refunding bonds. The issue that it's refinancing is the 2012 alternative facility bonds. There's maturities or principal payments from 2023 through 2030 that will be refinanced. The new bonds will have a term of eight years, and the payments will be February 1 of '23 through '30. So it's going to match the same as the old bonds. It's done specifically for savings purposes as opposed to restructuring. You will enroll in the state credit enhancement program. That is a program offered by the state where they will step in and make payments should there be any type of default. That program is without charge, and it gets you a little better rate because it reduces the risk to investors. We will go through a rating process like we have with other bonds that you've issued, and your current rating, your underlying rating is a double A3. We'll go through Moody's again with that. We'll do a competitive bid sale. So the morning of the sale, we will take bids, and we will bring them to you at the board meeting, and you will award the sale at that time. We reviewed all your debt, and this is the only one that has savings potential at this particular time for refunding. I will mention that you have two bonds with a call date. A call date is when they're eligible to be refinanced of 2025. So in two to three years, you have about $57 million worth of principal that you could refinance. So it's, it, it could be a significant savings because it's a fairly large refunding. And then in '26, you have one bond which, which has approximately $17 million worth of refundable maturities. And then in '27, you have one with $5 million. So you have three coming up. It'll be, if you do an advanced refunding, it'll probably be about two years out. If you do current, it's about three years out. But then for three years in a row, you will have an opportunity to save money. So I'm going to flip to page five, yeah, page five, and there's a calendar on that. So tonight, you're authorizing us to move ahead with the sale of the bonds on October 14th. And in between those, today in October 14th, we'll be working with administration to put together your official statement to get the rating review done. And then October 14th, we will take bids. We'll bring them to you that evening, and you'll award the sale of the bonds. The bonds will close on November 4th, which is when the money is actually transferred to the district. And then on February 1 of '22, that is when the money will pay off the old bonds. So taking a look on page six, that's what we call our sources and uses, we're estimating about $10.7 million as the par amount of bonds. We're also estimating $1.1 million worth of premium. Now, a premium is generated when, in this particular market, with interest rates really low, your bonds are purchased by an underwriting firm, and they resell them on the retail market. So of course, investors want the highest rate of return. So they're interested in that higher interest rate. Of course, that's not what the market is. So what, what they do is they will pay you upfront to give them a higher interest rate, so they can turn around and market it and sell it more readily to investors. So we're estimating that you will receive about $1 million upfront to have a little higher interest rate that you'll pay over time. And that premium will reduce the amount of bonds, so it contributes directly to the savings. So the more you get into premium, the more the savings to a large degree. So on page seven is the prior debt service. That's the 2012 bonds that are being refunded. You can see that each principal payment or maturity carries its own interest rate. So you can see the '23 through '30, the amount of principal and the coupon. And those coupons are interest rates, range from two to three percent. So unlike a, a home mortgage where you have a fixed rate over a period of time, each principal payment carries its own interest rate, and that is fixed at the time we sell the bonds. The new bonds, our estimates are on page eight. We are assuming about a three percent interest rate on each one of those maturities. That'll generate that million dollars plus in premium, which will contribute to your savings. When we calculate all that in, including the premium, you can see towards the bottom, a line called true interest cost. It's about 1.12 percent. And that's for a eight-year term. So rates are still very, very good. The bottom line is on the last page, page nine. You can see estimated savings for roughly $110,000 a year from '23 through '30. So about $880,000 worth of savings. So again, you have a resolution tonight, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Would you like me to read the recommendation?
Yeah, please do. Yes.
Recommendation is that the Board of Education adopt the resolution providing for the sale of general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds, Series 2021A, and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statute Section 126(c) 55 to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on these bonds.
Okay. May I have a motion for the action in front of us, please?
Still moved.
Moved by Director Hume, and a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director-
Seconded by Director Chester. I will open it up for any questions or comments. Go ahead, Director Alt.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight, Jeff, that was a great explanation. So this, obviously, you alluded to the fact that this isn't the first time that we've, we've refunded bonds. With this one, we're estimating in the range of eight hundred thousand in savings for, for our taxpayers. With the, I'm going to put you on the spot, if you don't have the answer, it's fine. Are we close to somewhere between two and two and a half million total with all the other refinanced bonds in savings that we've, that we've incurred for our taxpayers? Maybe, Lisa, you might.
Well, I, I, I can't really confirm the number, but you've done a number of refundings, so your twenty sixteen bonds were refunding bonds, and that was thirty-six million, so you probably generate several, you know?
It was close to six hundred, I thought.
Yeah, quite, quite a bit in savings on that one. You've done your taxable OPEB bonds, that was a refunding in twenty sixteen, so we had two kind of back-to-back. That was fourteen million that was refunded, so you're probably in the ballpark, and, and we can, we can always put a chart together that shows that.
That would be great, if you could, because I think it's, it's kind of a demonstrate, you know, it demonstrates to our community that, you know, in addition to talking about needing funding from the state, we also take actions like this when we're able to, in order to, you know, give back some money to our taxpayers, and, and just wanting to close the loop on that.
Yep, and, and the twenty twenty bonds were refunding bonds also, that was eleven and a half million dollars you refunded, so you have three fairly significant refundings that we can run calculations on.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Seeley, for your time tonight, for coming out. I will now vote on the motion in front of us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, in our new business part of our meeting tonight, we'll move to recommendation, recommendation to approve the terms and conditions of employment with operations and maintenance supervisors. Speaking will be Stacy Sovine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Bringing to you tonight a recommendation for the approval of terms and conditions of employment with our operations maintenance supervisors. This is a, not a union, it is a group that is associated, has submitted all their paperwork with the Bureau of Mediation Services, but they are not a formal union. So we do not negotiate, we meet with them to go through this, and that's why it's considered terms and conditions of employment, and not a master agreement, or bargaining, collective bargaining agreement. We have three members, three folks that are within this group. We are looking at a two-year increase cost of fourteen thousand two hundred, the MSBA two-year package increase is three point eight three percent, outside of updating the dates throughout the terms and conditions. The only other language adjustment we made was in, when we calculate the attendance incentive and credit that towards their 403B, instead of doing it on July fifteenth, we moved that a little bit later into the fall. The reason is, we have so many employees, that, that first paycheck of the fiscal year is July fifteenth, and often, we don't have all of the information from the previous year for attendance, has all the sick leave been submitted and every, too many things happen all at once, we want to make sure we do it right the first time, that's why we moved it back. It's not the first unit, we actually did this, well, we did this with another unit that'll be upcoming, that's all I believe, so. With that, my recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three master agreement with the operations and maintenance supervisors.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the recommendation in front of us, please?
Sell moved.
Moved by Director Alt, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote on the, the motion in front of us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, thank you to Stacy Sovine. All right, next, under new business for tonight, recommendation that the board approve the scoreboard asset purchase agreement and bill of sale. Speaking on this matter will be Lisa Ryder, welcome back, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
So, we have before us a, a proposal with an asset purchase agreement that has been signed, and before you, that would allow for us to purchase the current and existing video board that we have as our scoreboard in the Pate Stadium, and have that then our asset, that then allows us to continue to maintain and operate that asset as is. The amount of money that is being asked for the purchase of that scoreboard is one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and the closing date for this would be held on September The agreement itself is attached within the board packet, and an example of the bill of sale is also listed, so that's understood what it is that we are purchasing. With that, the recommendation?
Yes, please.
That the Board of Education approve the asset purchase agreement with the Black and Gold Alumni Foundation for the scoreboard in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, and authorize a board representative to execute any necessary documents at the scheduled closing, where a completed bill of sale will be finalized.
Thank you. I will take a motion on the recommendation in front of us.
Sell moved.
Moved by Director Connor, a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Director Said. Any questions or comments on this motion? Yes, Director Alt.
Thank you. Lisa, I'm not sure if this is for you, or Dr. Battle, if it's for you. Looking at the scoreboard, I see that while we do have advertisers there, there is opportunity for, in the form of open space, and I'm just wondering who's responsible for engaging advertisers, and both existing in terms of amounts due, but also recruiting, you know, reaching out to potential, other potential advertisers, and what kind of timeline are we on with that?
Thank you, Director Alt, members of the board. So, the current Black and Gold Foundation has given us the contracts for advertisers that they have, and we will be following up with them. So Lisa Ryder, myself, as well as Assistant Superintendent Brian Gersich, are working with Director Gayle Peck, our Activities Director, to have a process, we have been doing some research, we're finding out how our South Suburban Conference Partners are handling that information. We also are looking at our advertising policy to make sure we're in line with that, and we'll be letting the board know who will be actually responsible for following up with those advertising. Lisa, Brian, do you have anything to add?
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion in front of us? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Ryder. Last item under new business this evening is to approve, on a first reading basis, new policy six three four, electronic technologies acceptable use and rescind policy five two four, internet acceptable use and safety policy. Speaking on the matter will be Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology, welcome, Rachel.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. Policy six thirty-four is intended to guide the what and the why as we make decisions and actions regarding electronic technologies in our district. The policy is designed to provide a framework that help us protect students from harmful online content, and to provide students and staff with safe and effective access to digital content that supports learning in our work. The shift from the existing policy five twenty-four, which is student-only focused, to this proposed policy six thirty-four, which incorporates students, staff, and guests, is intended to address the complex and changing use of electronic technologies, and to modernize the language and concepts. This process was started over two years ago, as a need for a more comprehensive acceptable use policy, or AUP, was identified as a need. With that, the recommendation is to approve, on a first reading basis, the new policy six thirty-four, electronic technologies acceptable use, and to rescind policy five twenty-four, internet acceptable use and safety policy.
Thank you. I will take a motion on the recommendation in front of us, please?
Sell moved.
Moved by Director Werb, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Any questions or comments on this? Yes, Director Alt.
I just want to thank Rachel. You've put a lot of time into this policy, you've worked quietly across a, a policy committee that changed its constituency, and, you know, that kind of created a little, a little refresh and review, and just really appreciate your time and your diligence in, in bringing this forward, and making sure it's the best policy that, that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
No, not a question, just a comment, too, I'd like to kind of piggyback on that also, I like that you have all the definitions in there, it took a lot of timing to put, you know, to make that so explicit, and I just appreciate it, because it's a very easy read, it's very clear, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I will, will take a vote to approve on first reading basis, the, the new policy six thirty-four, Emerson, policy five twenty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone not in favor? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And having reached the end of our agreed-upon agenda for tonight, I will call us adjourned, the time is seven fifty. Thank you.
One.
Five zero was.